Ladies and gentlemen, how are you this evening? Our invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Eric Riddle with the Haltam Road Christian Church. He is the chaplain for the police department, and then he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask you all to stand, please.
I'd like to lead us in a prayer. Father God in heaven, we solemnize these proceedings recognizing that you are God, recognizing that life comes from you, recognizing that the freedoms and liberties that we have as a nation are blessings from your hand. I ask that your blessings will continue to be on our city, that you will continue to grant our city your prosperity, and that you will continue to grant our country freedom and liberty. I ask your blessing upon our city council members this evening as they make decisions. We ask that they will be decisions that will benefit our community. We pray that you will continue to bless our community with peace, with prosperity, and security. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. I want to ask that you will remain standing with me and face the flag as we share in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you Pastor Riddle. Before we get into the main agenda this evening, there's a fresh face up here among the council. I have -- most of you know Bill Eisen, our city manager, left for Pearland on Friday, where he has assumed the role of city manager. And our interim city manager is Mr. Pat Elfrank, who is also our finance director. Pat?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are many citizens here who probably do know me, as I have supervised the utility billing department, the municipal port department, and our accounting and finance function for the past eight years. I'm very pleased to be here in this capacity. I'm very flattered to -- that council has the confidence that they've expressed to me, and I'll just say I'll try and do the very best job I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. We have found some keys to a Toyota, so you might want to check your pockets if any of you drive a Toyota, and I'll put them over here on the end of the podium in case they belong -- Jean?
That would be mine, Madam Mayor.
They would be yours? What do they worth?
A lot.
Were we supposed to check our keys in?
It didn't take long, did it? I'd like to ask Pastor Riddle and Commander Denny and Brian Hamlin, who is -- Brian, are you here? He is also a chaplain with our police department and is a police officer in Keller, I believe. Is that right?
The old Commissioner Keller.
You do the Commission in Keller. I want to present them with the proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day, and if I may be allowed to read this. "The Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 13th through 19th as National Police Week. The members of the law enforcement agency of Haltam City play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Haltam City. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The men and women of the law enforcement agency of Haltam City unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore I, Nancy Watkins, Mayor of the City of Haltam City, Texas, call upon all citizens of Haltam City and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13th through 19th as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Haltam City to observe Tuesday, May the 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes." Gentlemen, it's with great pleasure that I present this to you. Commander Denny? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Our next agenda item will be presentation of awards to the winners of our photo contest. Fran Burns? Hi Fran.
Hello. Thank you for letting me come again this evening, and I am here to recognize the talented photographers who won this year in our 13th Annual Images of Haltam City Photo Contest. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about the photo contest. It started, as you might guess, 13 years ago. 1989 was our first year. And that very first year, we had 36 entries. This year, we had 242. And so as you can see, that it's grown over the years, and if you get the chance, please stop by the Haltam City Public Library and you'll be able to see almost all of the entries. Some of them had to go back to the students that entered from Birdville High School because they had another show that they wanted to enter their pieces in. But we want to congratulate everybody that entered. It gets more difficult every year to judge the best of show in all the other categories. So without ado, I would like to start with the honorable mention photographs. Also, I would like to thank our sponsors, the Beadification Board, Eckhart Drugs, Profoto, and the Haltam City Public Library. First honorable mention is for Haltam City Scenes, and it goes to Mary Reese, and I don't know if she's here or not, but let me go ahead and show you what her photograph looks like. Very nice Haltam City sunset. The next one is for honorable mention On The Road in Black and White, and it goes to Jeremy Sharp. He's a student at Trinity High School, and this is his photograph. I don't know if you can see it from back there, but -- You can also see the photographs on HCTV. They're shown during the announcements where they show just the type, and David Soriano has scanned them in so you can see what they look like. Also, during the judging, we taped the judges' comments, and David has put together a very informative and interesting program on how the judging goes, and if you're interested in photography, it's a good way to learn about what they're looking for. The next one is for honorable mention Animals, and it goes to Lana Calvin. Oh, here she is. Good. And I have a cute photograph because we're going to put it back in the display. Thanks Lana.
Let's see Fran.
It's a picture of an owl and a tree in Haltam City. I don't know. In your front yard.
Really?
From December till March.
Really? How neat. That's great. Okay. The next one is honorable mention On The Road in Color, and it goes to Treasure Bunch. She also is a student at Trinity High School, and hers is almost an abstract. It's such a close-up of a photograph of a flower, inside of a flower. So I'll let you look at that. We congratulate her. And this gentleman is a longtime friend and supporter of our contest, and he's won first place several times. His name is Travis Royal, and he won honorable mention for people and their activities. And he's here this evening. Thank you Travis.
Thanks. That's my great-grandson.
Your great-grandson. That's really cute. First place Animals, and this goes to Betty Westerfeld, and she's here this evening. This is really a neat shot, and she said she had set the cup down on the floor and the cat just was curious, and sure looks like he's drinking out of that cup, but he may or may not be. We thank Betty. We're going to give her a certificate and a $35 certificate to Profoto and $25 cash. And there you go. Thank you. I hope you like her again. What's the cat's name, by the way? Betty? What's the cat's name?
Tabby.
Tabby. This next one is for first place People and Their Activities, and this is for Loyal Bethel. She is a student at Haltam High School, and she works at Eckhart Drugs in the photo department up here in Haltam City. Isn't that cute? Isn't that great? I'm so glad you came. Congratulations. And again, she is getting the certificate for Profoto and cash award. Okay. This next one is for first place Haltam City Scenes, and it goes to Jana Southard. She is here. Kind of a unique photograph. All right. It's almost like a still life of a gate, and the colors are just beautiful in it.
They were taken on my street? Really?
You left your gate open.
Congratulations. It's beautiful. Thank you. And all the pictures were published in the -- all the winning photos were published in the Fort Worth Star-Telegram on, I believe it was March 31st. So we want to thank them too for being sponsors, and they gave us a full page of full color. So they've been really good about helping us every year. The next one is first place On The Road Color, and it goes to Christy Ferris. She caught it real good just before the plunge shot. She's also a student at Trinity High School. Last but not least, we have one fellow that won two categories, and not only did he win first place Black and White On The Road, he also won Best of Show, and his name is Rick Rhodes, and he's here. Black and White On The Road, first place. And I don't know if you -- you can probably appreciate how good this is because out of 242 pictures, this is the one that they chose. They just zeroed in on this picture for Best of Show.
This is the Best of Show right here?
It's Best of Show.
Oh my. Is that chalk?
Uh huh.
Yes?
Fran, hold that up where his son can take a picture of it.
Okay.
His son's going to enter that one next year. One more.
Okay. Why don't you tell about how you got this shot?
First of all, I'll make a little short story about this picture.
Sir, would you get a little closer to the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
The afternoon that I got the call, I was at Irving Baylor Medical Center. My dad was having triple bypass surgery, so this came as an announcement to me right in the middle of the surgery. And it was a very elated feeling at that time, in a time of stress. And he's doing fine, and he would be here tonight, but he just came home Saturday morning. So he's at home resting, and everything went well. So it's quite an honor, and I'd like to dedicate this win to him.
Well, we're delighted that he's doing well, and congratulations to you.
Because Rick's the winner of the Best Show photograph, we're purchasing this picture for our gallery out here for $75, and also because he's a category winner, he gets a $25 cash award, so we really do appreciate you and hope to see a whole lot more from you.
Thank you.
Thank you Fran. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda, and it consists of items number three through 13. Items number 11 and 12 have been tabled, so council, we would be ready for motion. First, I would like to mention to everyone that agenda items number six and 13 concern our new Frenchage Road at North Beach and 820. It will run from Beach Street to Anderson Boulevard. The contract will be lit this fall, and this road is being constructed at absolutely no cost to the City of Haltam City. The state is paying half, and mercantile partners and colonial partners are paying the other half. So we are getting our Frenchage Road from Beach Street to Anderson Boulevard at absolutely no cost to any of us. So with that, we'd be ready for motion. Councilmember Avery?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda with items number 11 and 12 being tabled until the next meeting.
And I believe that we had a slight change in the minutes on agenda item number three, and on agenda item number 13, we had a typo that we corrected. So with that, will you add that to your?
Yes, with those corrections being made.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Patino?
That's for a second.
I have a motion and a second, gentlemen. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Our next agenda item is a public hearing for final plating. Mr. Elfrank? I almost said Mr. Eisen.
Almost. They both begin with me. Tonight, council was asked to conduct a public hearing and consider the application of Henry Romani for the Legend Point addition, which I know you're all familiar with where it's at. Staff has told me, our planning and zoning department has told me that everything is in order on this particular item, and we're in good shape. However, if you have any questions, staff is here to answer them as needed.
All right. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Do you wish to address the council or wait and see if there's any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone to speak against? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and we'd be ready for motion, council. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve PO 2500.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery?
That's for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Our next agenda item is the Visitors and Citizens Forum, and I do have some speakers' cards. A five-minute time limit will be granted. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings Councilmember Hanserling? I'll call on you first, sir.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is going to be my last council meeting. I just want to take a brief moment to say a word of thanks. First of all, I'd like to say a word of thanks to my family and to my extended family for their patience and support over the last three and a half years, and really my entire involvement with the city over the last, say, six or so years. A word of thanks to all the volunteers and all the citizens, employees, department heads, present council and past councils for their working so hard and giving so much of themselves to help make Haltam City a good community to live and to work. Specifically, I'd like to thank all those that supported me in the past with their vote that allowed me the opportunity to serve in this capacity, and I feel I've taken the responsibility that the citizens have entrusted to me to make decisions on their behalf very serious, and I'm hopeful that those decisions have worked for the benefit of the city as a whole. It's been a very rewarding and educational, and most of all, humbling experience for me to be involved in this capacity. And like anything, there's good parts and bad parts, and I've enjoyed quite a bit about the job and for the better for it. And with that being said, I'll miss being directly involved with the city, and I'd like to wish everyone the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanserling? Next speaker's card is Mr. Bill Journay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Bill Journay, and I live at 2710 Moneta Avenue here in Haltam City. And pardon for writing this, I'm not that much of a public speaker, but this shan't take long. And it is a problem that I see every day, and I've been addressed similar to this quite often. Incidentally, I wanted to apologize, last time I was here, I said something about a city sales tax, which wasn't a city sales tax in fact. But okay, back to my little agenda. The dope problem is bad. It's so bad that it's affecting even our grammar school children. The highest rate of death among our youth is not caused by shootings, nor are they necessarily drug-related. You can believe that disease and natural causes are on the list, but not as great as a number as the murderous automobile, the top of the list on the top on the list of death for our children. Whether we gather statistics or simply read the newspapers, it is like a war zone out here. In fact, automobile accidents cripple and kill equal to any war or epidemic of recent times. Yet we do nothing, lest we disturb our reckless lifestyle, our greedy lack of concern. We must remember that we are proud and progressive. The least of our concerns should be the fact that our people are dying like mad cows or the infamous bubonic plague. At best, we scold and penalize people for lack of insurance and failure to wear a seat belt. What's wrong with this picture? Who cares? It's election time. Time to stir the people in a positive fashion for the sake of a buck and a vote. We need to see how many will respond to a volunteer cleanup effort, but neither did the voting people create this problem, nor should it be their responsibility to clean up after some lazy and resentful among us. This does not change the real issues. You know, our young people dying all around us, and you have the audacity to want us to believe it is because of insurance and seat belts. No, it is because we are knee-deep in crime due to political, economic, and social neglect. Or who will prove me wrong? Pardon me as I speak for those who no longer have a voice for themselves, or for some of you, or for those who might fear you. Listen closely to my last words, for surely I am not alone in my feelings. I would rather be safe than clean. Indeed, I would rather be free than pretty. In fact, I believe I could do without a friend in the world, and that's saying a lot, if I could just walk from your place to mine without fear, as once I could, even after dark. Let us now speak of proud and progressive cities. Tell us exactly what you're doing with our tax dollars and why, and what of any real value do you have to offer any you might ask for a vote? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Debbie Harsh. Hi Debbie. Will you come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Debbie Harsh. I live at 4429 Stanley Keller here in Haltam City. Mayor Watkins and council. I haven't had anything publicly to say since the ex-mayor Jack Lewis threw me into the limelight with the campaign sign fiasco back in September during the presidential election. Once again, I feel the need to voice concerns that have come to my attention in the past month. I've come before you this evening -- I'm sorry I'm having to read this, but there's no way I could remember it all. I've come before you this evening to address the derogative campaign literature recently sent through the mail to voters in Haltam City. I found it to be offensive and seemed to me to be a flagrant attempt at character assassination toward our present mayor and several of our council members. Negative campaigning such as this and recent newspaper articles embarrasses not only the council and mayor, but all the residents of Haltam City, and once again projects an air of discord. I seem to remember this candidate demanding an apology for a statement supposedly made about him and waving around a check during a council meeting for a polygraph test to be taken. I think this candidate owes apologies to all named in this degrading attack disguised as campaign literature. I also think guidelines and restrictions should be set on campaign literature. A candidate should run on his or her merits and positive initiatives. I hope we, the voters, are wise enough to see through the name bashing. We deserve to hear what you can do for our city and not how much negative hype you can throw out. In my opinion, these insinuations are absurd, and most everything on this page was clipped and pasted to have you believe the way the candidate wanted. I'm so tired of hearing gripes about used car lots. Anyone that has lived in Haltam City knows that's where a lot of the city's tax money comes from. They've been here for as long as I can remember. In fact, John Williams' lot is on the same lot that my Sunday School teachers owned when I was a little girl. Then to try and dub Big John a racist is just beyond belief. Anyone that knows him knows the truth. I think everyone and their families have things in their past that should remain in the past and not be used against the person they are today. I leave you with these thoughts to ponder. Would all these offensive accusations be hurled about if Mayor Nancy was a man? Or is it because she's a woman? You feel the need to make her fair game? It's as though the old regime is carrying out a vendetta to keep the present mayor and council from creating a positive direction forward in our city's advancement. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next agenda item is announcements and/or events. Any announcements, council? Then we'll move on to other business. Agenda item 15 is the second quarter financial report. Mr. Elfrank, do you want to put your other hat on for a moment?
I guess I can do that.
All right.
Excellent. I think I've been wearing two at the same time lately.
You probably will for a while, won't you?
I think so.
Yeah.
What we have here tonight is our customary quarterly financial report where we try and give the council and our citizens a snapshot photo of where we are at with regards to our revenues and our expenditures. Basically, I'll try and sum up this rather detailed, and even though it's a summary, it's still kind of lengthy report. I'll focus on the general fund first. We have received in 63.8 percent of our annual revenues for the general fund. It's definitely higher, even though 50 percent of the year has gone by, but that's because we received the bulk of our tax revenues during the month of January. General fund expenditures are a little bit more consistent with the fact that we passed the halfway mark of our fiscal year. We have thus far spent 49.4 percent of our budget, which is compared to 48.2 percent last year. And basically, I'll just say that in that regard, things are pretty much in control. Going on page, the next page on this with the Water and Sewer Fund, that's the only other fund I think that I'll really focus on because it's a major fund for us. You'll note that our water and sewer revenues are materially higher than they were last year because we did have a modest rate increase effective on October 1st of 2000. However, that rate increase was a direct result of a cost increase that was passed on to us by the City of Fort Worth, who provides our water and our sewer treatment facilities. Our expenditures in that area for water purchase and sewer treatment has increased by about 21 percent. The fact that revenue lags behind that a little bit is not a big concern because our big revenue months are still ahead of us when the weather turns dry. big revenue months are still ahead of us when the weather turns dry and hot, as it usually does here in Texas. Other than that, I really don't have anything else to focus on in this report. We do have our quarterly investment report that is also part of this. This is a state mandated report that is mandated by the Public Funds Investment Act. We have about $20 million that we're investing right now. A great deal of that money is earmarked for street construction projects and the like in this city that'll take place over the next year or two. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to turn and answer.
Counsel, we would be ready for a motion. Councilmember Hurley?
Madam Mayor, I move we accept and approve the report, financial report, 2001 second quarter financial report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanserling?
That's for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Councilmember, Councilmember Avery, do you have discussion?
That was for a second.
Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number 16 is for our land use assumptions. Mr. Elfrinck?
This is an item that affects the city with regard to the future development that we will have here, whether it's residential development or commercial development. The state mandates that any city that is charging impact fees review the basis for those fees every three years. We are in the process of doing that. What you're seeing here is really just one step along the way. This will come back to us again a few months. And I'll just kind of define impact fees real quick is what these fees are geared for is so that the impact of new development is assessed and we try to have these fees set so that new development pays its own way for the demand for new utilities that are hoisted upon the city. And with that, we have our city engineer and a consulting engineer, Diane Palmer here, who will elaborate a little bit more on some of the aspects of this land use plan.
Counsel, do we have someone open to making a motion at this point? Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to ask our city manager, is there any particular way this motion needs to be worded?
I'll defer to the city engineer, but basically just to accept these assumptions at this point in time because you will see this come back to you again.
So will it.
Thank you. I do remember counselor saying we have public hearings on this coming up. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
That's for a second.
I have a motion and a second. And now discussion, would you like to hear from the planner at this point?
Madam Mayor, I think for the benefit of our audience and then cable for the cities, I think that being aligned to heaven, do the next.
Ms. Palmer, would you please proceed?
Diane Palmer, representing T. Nolan Perkins and Darrell Palmer Group. And I'll just briefly discuss what's in the packet. Most of it is information for you so that you're up to speed on impact fees and what we're doing with impact fees and why we do them and what the purposes are. What we've asked you to do today is look at three areas in particular that has experienced some changes. Most of it is either already done or in the process of being done from the land use plan that was adopted in 1995. And in your figures, there's figure four, five, and six. The area in figure four is the upper portion in fossil ridge where there's quite a bit of land that was designated to be single-family that appears to be going multifamily. There's another area along McLean and Beach Street that is, that was industrial that is going multifamily as well as a switch from single-family to some park area. And then another area down here at Airport Freeway and Minnis Drive that with the channelization by the Corps of Engineers, which is a project that I think will be on your bond election in the fall, is going to potentially give the opportunity for this area to develop into a commercial land use. And so from our perspective, what we're asking you to do and what you've offered us tonight is to approve these land use changes and none others with the 1995 land use plan, these three land use changes so that we can develop a capital improvements plan for water and capital improvements plan for sewer for the areas that are undeveloped in the city. And then we'll be coming back to you and talking to you about what the fees may need to be for those developments that come in, be able to pay for that infrastructure. And we'll probably be doing that in June or July.
Okay.
Any questions?
Greg, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, again, I just wanted to highlight that we're doing this as a three-step process. First, to look at potential changes to our existing land use plan so that we feel comfortable with what may go there. And in all these cases, the land is either currently zoned that way or you have property developing in that manner as we speak. Then secondly, which will be coming back to you in June or July, is the utilities that will be used to service those changes and other vacant areas in Halton City. And lastly, to set the corresponding fees. Basically, impact fees are so that new development pays their fair share because they will have an impact on our existing facilities. And I think the state law is set up so that the existing ratepayers don't have to pay for that impact out of their system.
Someone living in the northern part of town doesn't have to pay for the new development in the southern part of town?
Well, and that's an issue that we'll be discussing currently, the way our impact fee system is set up. It's set up so that we collect fees on the south part of town at one rate and we collect fees on the north side of town at another rate. What that allows us to do is charge a cheaper rate on the south side of town with the thinking, I believe, back in 1990, making it more desirable to develop on the south side of town. However, the difference in fees is so miniscule, I don't believe that a developer truly uses that to his equation on whether he or she is going to buy that property or not. What it ends up ultimately doing is handicapping us from the sense that the money that we collect on the north side of town, which is where most of our development is now, we can't use that on the south side of town. We have to use it on the north. So it looks like we'll be coming back to you and again, as she indicated, in June or July. That's something we want to take a very close look at. It may be that we don't want to have a two-tiered system, that we do want to have just one impact fee, whether you develop on the north or the south part of town, so that we can use that money to enhance the infrastructure on the south side of town and maybe make that a little bit more attractive for development.
We're reviewing our land use plan now and so that could have a bearing on how all of this shakes out, correct? No?
One of the reasons we came to you today is we want you to approve these changes for the specific purpose of setting impact fees. And as you go through and redo your land use plan, it may be approved a year from now or six months from now. Then when this cycle comes back through again in three years, we would take that new land use plan and look at it as well as, we are also updating the capital improvements plans right now, but two years from now, you may have another capital improvements plan that needs to be considered. So this, the impact fee process is a rolling process and we wanted to, we knew that the land use plan was going on, but we wanted to get this approval because this impacts everything we're doing from an engineering perspective. And we'll set the impact fees on that and you'll have an opportunity to look at whatever changes occur with the new plan in another three years.
And hopefully the state won't take this away.
Right. In your packet, there's some information about what the legislative changes are that are being considered right now. And one of the very critical things is they want to be able to force you to refund or give a 50, at least a 50% credit of whatever the maximum fee could be, which may limit the capability of a lot of cities to be able to collect that money and use it for the purposes that it's intended.
Thank you very much for your report. I have a motion and a second, gentlemen. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Agenda item number 17 is on setting the date for our May council meetings. Election Day is, just so I can give you some dates here, Election Day is May the 5th. Council will meet on May the 8th to canvass that election and we will do that at 6:00 PM. We will have our regular council meeting on the 14th of May and the last council meeting is slated for May the 28th, which is Memorial Day, so that meeting will be canceled. And then we'll start over again with the regular scheduled meetings in June. Councilmember Jennings?
Madam Mayor, I believe in pre-council, we discussed making the canvas at 6:30 instead of 6:00 PM.
Well, I heard us say that, but is that what we decided on 6:30?
I thought that's what everybody said.
I beg your pardon. Okay. That'll be 6:30 then on, on May, I'm sorry, on May the 8th. Okay. Councilmember Avery?
I was going to make that same correction.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 18, oh, I'm sorry, let me have a motion, please, counsel. Councilmember Avery?
So will I.
Councilmember Williams?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please register your vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. We have no resignations from boards or commissions on agenda item number 18. Agenda item number 19, our volunteer service board appointment of Shelley Bryan. Shelley has had to drop out of that bond study committee, so they have accepted her resignation and have recommended the appointment of Mr. Steven Van Zandt as their representative. So counsel, could I have that ratified, please? Ratification passes. Thank you. I was asked to mention to those of you that are on that bond study committee, we have, I believe, a total of 18 members and I think, I think that we've not had real good attendance and so we would like to urge you to please participate in that, in that committee to which you've been appointed. It will, how much longer are the meetings, Helen?
Till at least the first week in June.
So it'll be over around the first week in June, so we would ask you if you would please try your best to attend those meetings.
The third Monday night.
Third Monday? On the third Mondays. Yes. Okay, you want to tell me when they are?
They each have their own schedule. Yes.
Well, are they different times? Is it going to be too confusing?
It's a little confusing, but each member of the committee does have a copy of the complete schedule that runs through the, I think, the third week of, the fourth week of May.
Okay, okay. So they already have that scheduled?
They do indeed. The first meeting night, we scheduled out all of the meetings for the future of that committee. And we are making good progress. We've had, in addition to several meetings, we've had two tours of different city facilities where they got to see firsthand what our present library, fire station, and public works locations look like.
Okay, thank you very much. We're all here, so we don't have any excused absences and counselor says we have no executive session this evening, so we will adjourn this meeting at 8:13 PM.
Yes.